The time is 7:31. I call the October 21st meeting of Yardley Borough Council to order. Please stand for the pledge to our flag, which is in front of us. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to recall for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common.
Good job.
Roll call, please. Mr. Stump, Mr. Carlson, Mr. Finer, Ms. Thompson, Ms. Scherer, Mr. Appelbaum, and Ms. Siegel-Morris. Mr. Stump had desired to call in. Do we have him on the line? Okay, we'll check back later on. We are going to start the meeting today with several joyful votes, and I will turn it over to Chief Golden for those.
Thank you, Madam President. The first thing, Madam President, I would like to discuss is we have a civil service, through the Civil Service Commission, during that testing phase, it was deemed that Officer Bowday has scored the highest during that process with the civil service. Officer Bowday currently serves as a part-time police officer, a position he has held since February of 2025. Officer Bowday holds a bachelor's degree from Westchester University and a graduate of Temple Police Academy. Madam President, I respectfully request council to consider a motion for Yardley Borough to hire William E. Bowday as now a full-time civil service police officer, subject to the terms of probation set forth in the collective bargaining agreement, and a starting date of today, October 21st, 2025.
We would love to do that, but first, let's have a vote to accept the certified list. Do we have that list?
Yes, that was in your packet. The certified list is Mr. William Bowday, and then the second person on the list was Mr. Furley.
Thank you. Do I hear a motion to approve the list? Is there a second? Motion was made by Councilperson Scherer, seconded by Councilperson Carlson. Discussion from council? Discussion from the public? Hearing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries unanimously. Now, we shall move on to our motion to hire our new full-time police officer, Officer William Bowday. Do I hear a motion to that effect? Is there a second?
Second.
Motion was made by Councilperson Scherer, seconded by Councilperson Finer. Discussion from council? Discussion from the public? Hearing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries unanimously. Congratulations, Officer Bowday.
Okay, good evening, everyone. It's great to see you in full room, and I know we have a lot of officers doing, a lot of officers from the department supporting, and a lot of community, and of course, counsel, our staff, and Chief. As we always say, in Yardley Borough, just the meeting before here for the last hour, we don't take the role that these officers commit themselves to lightly. We understand there's risk involved, and family that they leave at night, and they have to report home to every moment and every time they come home, and we get that, and we understand that. So please, if you're here supporting, just know every one in the room that is representing Yardley Borough takes this very seriously and appreciates and respects the commitment of these officers, okay? So you ready to do this?
Absolutely.
Please raise your hand, repeat after me. I do solemnly swear, I do solemnly swear, that I will support, obey, and defend.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of this Commonwealth.
And the Constitution of this Commonwealth.
I will uphold the laws and ordinances.
I will uphold the laws and ordinances.
Of the borough of Yardley.
Of the borough of Yardley.
And I will discharge the duties.
And I will discharge the duties.
Of a civil service police officer.
Of a civil service police officer.
Of the borough of Yardley.
Of the borough of Yardley.
With fidelity.
With fidelity.
And to the best of my judgment.
And to the best of my judgment.
And ability.
And ability.
Congratulations. For about half the group, do you want to come to the end? This is important time, so take your time, take all the time you need, okay? Family, go. Chief, get in there. Congratulations. You guys will take good care of them. That's a good job.
All right, your item again, Chief Golden.
Thank you, Madam President. Also, Madam President, on the date of Tuesday, October 7th of 2025, I had asked Borough Council to give a conditional offer of employment to applicant Daniel Baxter, pending the review of the application, background check, and the passing of all the required examinations, and all other MOPAC eligibility requirements. I was notified by MOPAC on October 8th that Mr. Daniel Baxter had met and passed all eligibility requirements, and is now certified to take office as a Yardley Borough police officer. I respectfully request that council consider a motion for Yardley Borough to extend an offer of employment to hire Daniel Baxter as a part-time police officer.
Thank you, sir. I believe it's a welcome back for Mr. Baxter, right?
It is, yes.
All right, do I hear a motion to that effect? Is there a second?
Second.
Motion was made by Councilperson Scherer, seconded by Councilperson Finer. Discussion from council? Discussion from the public? Hearing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries unanimously. Congratulations, Officer Baxter. There you go. Happy memories.
All right, you ready?
I'm jumping right in.
You've never done this before, so please, you remember?
I don't remember.
So please raise your hand, repeat after me. I do solemnly swear, I do solemnly swear, that I will support, obey, and defend.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of this Commonwealth.
And the Constitution of this Commonwealth.
I will uphold the laws and ordinances.
I will uphold the laws and ordinances.
Of the borough of Yardley.
Of the borough of Yardley.
And I will discharge the duties.
And I will discharge the duties.
Of a non-civil service police officer.
Of a non-civil service police officer.
Of the borough of Yardley.
Of the borough of Yardley.
With fidelity.
With fidelity.
And to the best of my judgment.
With the best of my judgment.
And ability.
And ability.
Congratulations, welcome back.
Thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't even... So while this is going on, I'll say, we started a long tradition of someone, anyone important to the officer, of pinning the badge, so that's what we have to do.
Thank you, congratulations. And another one.
Yes, Madam President, one last one. Well, one more answer to this. Madam President, on the date of Tuesday, August 19th, 2025, I had asked Borough Council to give a conditional offer of employment to applicant Alexander Byers, also pending the review of the application, the background check, and the passing of all the required examinations, and all other MOPAC eligibility requirements. I was notified by MOPAC on October 7th, 2025, that Mr. Alexander Byers had met and passed all eligibility requirements, and is now certified to take office as a Yardley Borough police officer. I respectfully request council to consider a motion for Yardley Borough to extend an offer of employment, and to hire Alexander Byers as a part-time police officer.
Thank you. Do I hear a motion to that effect?
Can we move?
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion was made by Councilperson Scherer, seconded by Councilperson Carlson. Any discussion from council? Discussion from the public? Hearing none, I will call the question. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries unanimously. Congratulations, Officer Byers.
Have you got enough to memorize it? You want to come up and join us?
No.
So please raise your hand, repeat after me. I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
I will support, obey, and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of this Commonwealth.
And the Constitution of this Commonwealth.
I will uphold the laws and ordinances.
I will uphold the laws and ordinances.
Of the borough of Yardley.
Of the borough of Yardley.
And I will discharge the duties.
And discharge the duties.
Of a non-civil service police officer.
Of a non-civil service police officer.
Of the borough of Yardley.
Of the borough of Yardley.
With fidelity.
With fidelity.
And to the best of my judgment.
To the best of my judgment.
And ability.
And ability.
There you go.
You got it.
Yep, absolutely. Come on, get your pictures, family, no doubt.
Everybody ready? One, two, three.
One more. I promise it's the last one.
These are good things. We can keep going all night with this.
Madam President, on September 21st, 2024, Officer Martin was appointed as a full-time Yardley Borough Police Department police officer, from the competitive list of qualified applicants resulting from the Borough Civil Service Commission examination. Since his full-time of employment, Officer Martin has handled or assisted 3,234 calls for service, issued 268 traffic citations, maintains and issues the equipment for newly hired YBPD officers, and assisted with field training. He also handles the coordination of police vehicle maintenance with outstanding results. He has also strengthened existing relations with residents and businesses alike. He also continues to help and conduct background investigations on newly hired officers, as the two you just seen today. He also helps also with the hiring of the auxiliary police force as well. During his probationary period, Officer Martin has been evaluated by his supervisory chain of command. From 9/21/24 to October 1st, 2025, Officer Martin has received a grade of an outstanding performance. As such, I respectfully, with and without reservation, recommend that Officer Martin be considered by council for retention as a permanent police officer, effective today, October 21st, 2025, and be appointed as a police officer first class, consistent with the other full-time permanent police officers who have also successfully completed probation.
Thank you, Chief. Do I hear a motion to that effect?
Can we move?
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion was made by Councilperson Scherer, seconded by... Finer. Discussion from council? Discussion from the public? I'll call the question. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries unanimously. Congratulations, Officer Martin.
I'm glad you knew that, because you've been doing it.
I'm okay. Do you have anyone that wants to pin you, Joe?
I'll undo it.
All right, if anybody who would not like to stay for the Yardley Borough Council meeting would like to leave now, we will not take offense. I'll give you, I'll give you 90 seconds to clear the room before we proceed.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes.
You forget when you're president.
Of course.
Oh, we're at first.
I do think that it can be...
If I missed anything, you'll just let me know.
I think you have to communicate.
Thank you, congratulations.
Oh, yeah, that's right.
Thank you, Chief. All right, folks. Ready? Let's move on to community announcements. This is the portion of the meeting where members, first at the table, then from the public, can tell us about upcoming events happening in or around Yardley Borough. Any community announcements from the table?
Wait a second, Michelle.
Oh, thank you. Please. I'd just like to remind anybody that doesn't already know that on Saturday, Friends of Lake Afton is having a cleanup day at Lake Afton from 8 to 12. If you have some time, come out. If you have basics like work gloves, and like some, you know, rakes or towels, I think they call them, bring them. If not, we have enough for, you know, for those that don't have any. Please come out and make Lake Afton look beautiful for the winter season. Thank you.
Bring them with your name clearly marked on them in some way.
That's true. They do get lost if you don't... I personally will take really colorful tape, something that really stands out, you know, because the name will rub off if you use magic marker with sweat.
As someone whose husband has not forgiven me that his shovel never came home with me, definitely mark your work materials. Thank you, Councilperson Scherer. Any other community announcements from the table first?
Carathon and Canal Ween this coming Sunday, October 26th, beginning at noon. My understanding would, 450 pumpkins, so come prepared to cut, gut, and carve jackal earnings. And that, I believe, is all I have to say.
Cut, gut, and carve.
Cut, gut, and carve.
We need carve to also...
That would be the new tagline.
Awesome, thank you. Community announcements? Any others from the table?
Halloween parade.
Halloween parade is 11:00 a.m. on Saturday, which does mean you can go to Lake Afton for an hour and a half, clean up, and make it for the Halloween parade, which is what I plan to do. All right, any community announcements from the public about upcoming events in or around Yardley? Okay, great. Public comment. This is the portion of the meeting where members of the public can approach council, state their name, whether or not they're a Yardley Borough resident. Please keep your comments to three minutes per matter. Any public comment this evening?
Madam President?
Yes.
If no one from the audience has anything, I have something I'd like to say.
Sure.
This last week or so has been a pretty sad time for Yardley Borough. You may not be familiar, but there was a passing of two very important persons that lived in Yardley Borough and made huge contributions to this community. The first person I'd like to speak of is Tom Cadwallader. He was a lawyer in town for over 50 years, took over a practice from his father, and of course, if you are from Yardley, you would recognize the Cadwallader name as being historical. What I would like to say about Tom as a person, as a friend, he was caring, and he reached out to me and my family personally to make sure that my son was able to attend some speech and debate competitions throughout the country without being asked. And beyond that, I don't think, though he's not a relative, not even my lawyer, but felt, I felt like I was family, and that's a great, that's great character. And with that said, I also believe that he helped me try to understand ego over serving the community. And yes, sometimes I make mistakes, and I forget, but in general, I like to follow his lead. I may actually publicly apologize to Michelle. Last time, we had a little altercation. I don't remember what it was about, but sorry about that. And when you are family, like Michelle and I are, not literally, you can have disagreements, and you can say things, and not really mean it in a way that you might think. So I hope that you understand. Secondly, we lost another very important person from the Yardley community, Vince Profi. You might recognize his name from a book he wrote called Yardley: Images of America. It's the one and only book, I think, about Yardley Borough. You can get it, plug for the commonplace bookstore. You can get a copy there. Vince, who I didn't know well, but I have met him a few times, he apparently was a Yardley Borough council member, which I did not know until I read the obituary, and he was a member of the Yardley Historical Association. He was instrumental in commemorating the borough's tricentennial, if you remember that. I don't, because I didn't live here, in 19, what, that would be 1982. But from that, he wrote this really important book that has given us a, you know, visual and written record of our community that I think serves us well. And I just want to say thanks to both of them. They will both be deeply missed, and thank you for allowing me the time for saying that.
Well said, David. Thank you so much for remembering both of them.
I would just like to say one little thing.
Sure.
I would just like to put a shout out to Marion Klean. She's a behind-the-scenes person that nobody usually knows about her, sees her, or anything, and she takes our wonderful council meetings that range from 30 minutes to three hours, and she puts our minutes together, and I appreciate her work.
Also, well said. Thank you. Any other public comment this evening? Yes.
So I think everyone on council received an email, and someone on council asked me if I would read it tonight. Is that possible as correspondence?
Sure.
So I typically don't need to read things, and I would defer to you, Council President, but you are mentioned in this email, so I think that probably doesn't make sense for you to read it. But I would defer to Council Vice President, if you'd like to read it, or...
Sure.
Okay.
I'd be happy to. Just need a moment to call that one up.
Yeah.
I think I know the one you referred to.
It was from Jenny Lynn McVan. She asked someone to read it, so...
It came about 10 o'clock last night.
Yeah, no, no, I forgot. I'll get it. You know, we have a Wi-Fi problem, so I have to get back on the, on the Wi-Fi, so give me a moment to get it, and I'll have it. Or I can get it here. I'll read it off my phone.
So this correspondent says, "Hello, I'm unable to attend a 10/21 council meeting as I'm away in Boston. If somebody receiving this would consider reading it..." Okay, I guess I didn't have to read that part. "First, thank you to whomever is reading this. As I was unable to attend tonight's meeting due to being out of town, but I'm hopeful my message will be heard. When my husband and I moved into this once sleepy town of Yardley over 20 years ago, one of the first things I noticed was the kindness of this town and the open-mindedness of differing opinions, which I witnessed at council meetings and mayoral races over the years, something drastically changed over the past few years, and not for the better. All of this haste, bitterness, and anger is on a stage for our children to see. My 13-year-old daughters thought it disgusting that there were political signs made and posted throughout the borough mocking Council President Thompson. If two teenage girls can detect inappropriateness, why can't the adults that are making and posting such signs? It is unacceptable, and we are better than that. I have received several emails over the years from Dawn P., in which she targets an individual that has a differing opinion from hers, and she calls them out on any mistakes they've made in the past. We all make mistakes and have said or done things we regret. It's from mistakes that we learn lessons in life. We have spent over $40,000 in right-to-no requests from Dawn. That's $40,000 of tax paper dollars on nonsense. This has to stop. These council members are unpaid volunteers dedicating their time, time away from their families for the betterment of our town. While you may not agree or align politically with the candidates, express your views at council meetings, but the hate mails and slanderous posters need to stop. Political polarization doesn't start at a presidential level. It begins with small town races such as these in Yardley. I'm hopeful that we can collectively lead by better examples to our youth, have an open mind to listen to the views of others, and perhaps get to know your neighbors personally to break the partisan barriers. Thank you for your time. Best, Jenny Lynn McVan." I don't know if I should read the address.
Probably not the address.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other public comments this evening? Yes, from the, Mr. Hofelder?
Hi. First, I'd like to say that if I have a problem with anyone, I come in person to talk.
Can you please state your name and whether or not you're...
Raymond Hofelder, 25-year resident of Yardley.
Thank you.
So I come in person. I don't send letters and do it. Anyway, this is about the police department and political violence, which you talked about in your article, and this is, I feel much better now that Chief Golden's in charge, but this happened last year, and nothing was done about it, and I talk to people about it, and they're still afraid, because the case was just resolved recently with the guy with the nails. I think it's important to address the subject of political violence in the context of the current discussion of the Yardley Borough Police Department. Councilwoman Caroline Thompson stated in a news article profiling her in the patch on October 9th, "Political violence has absolutely no place in our nation, and it certainly has no place in Yardley Borough." However, this statement is not true, because our community did recently experience political violence, and nothing was done about it. During last year's presidential election campaign, at least 12 borough residents had multiple incidents of nails strewn in their driveways and other areas of their property, causing several flat tires and other damage to their vehicles. Additionally, this caused tremendous anxiety where residents had to check their driveways every day. I personally know most of these people. Six of these families belong to my church. Most of these victims called the police to report this vandalism. However, then-chief, the then-chief at that time refused to investigate these incidents. I recently encountered two other families who also had nails thrown in their driveway. They were afraid to even make a police report. Council members were also notified of these incidents, but no action was taken. Councilwoman Thompson could have asked the chief to investigate, but she took no action, perhaps because she and the chief did not care for the political party whose signs were displayed on the lawns. When people attempted to comment about the vandalism on the borough's unofficial Facebook page, the comments were immediately removed by a councilperson who moderates the Facebook page. Borough public safety officials refused to address the issue. A resident had to send out a public safety announcement warning other residents to check their driveways. This despicable breach of public safety in a town this small was inexcusable. The perpetrator, Alric Dahlberg, who lives on Breeze Drive in Yardley Borough, was caught by lower Makefield detectives prior to Chief Kelly taking over there, which is why the news article only mentions three victims in lower Makefield township. This is because no investigation was conducted for the 12 victims who reside in the borough. On October 7th, Mr. Dahlberg was sentenced to two to 23 months in Bucks County Prison and 36 months of probation. He was also ordered to pay restitution to the victims. However, because our previous chief refused to investigate these incidents, the victims who reside in Yardley Borough will not be receiving any restitution from this convicted felon. I strongly believe this situation will not occur again under the current leadership of Chief Golden. Unlike the previous chief, Chief Golden is a man of the highest integrity and treats everyone the same in carrying out his duties. It is important that our police department treat all residents the same. This was not the case during the past 10 years. Therefore, I support Yardley Borough retaining its own police department under the command of Chief Golden, and we need a mayor with integrity who does not ignore crimes based on residents' political affiliations.
Thank you, Mr. Hofelder. I would just like to state that that statement is not accurate, that it was investigated by Chief Kelly. I do not direct the chief in my position, so I, council had nothing to do with those investigations, but you're welcome to speak with Chief Golden, who is also involved in those investigations. That's just not accurate. Next public comment.
May I ask? President Thompson, I'd like to comment as well.
Please.
Because I was mentioned in that, I just want to state that I did not have anything to do with turning the comments off on that post, as was mentioned. That is an assumption that was made about me by someone who could not possibly have known that. It was actually another admin. There's four people on the group, three people besides myself, and I intentionally did not, I recused myself from that, because I felt it was a conflict of interest of my duties on council, and there's nothing I've done in any of the times in admin of the group, which is an activity I do outside of council, that has ever conflicted with my duties as a councilman.
Mayor Harding?
Yeah, I just wanted to say while I, and I'll summarize the words, because I can't remember them exactly. While I do agree that Chief Golden is a man of high moral character, I also believe Chief Kelly is a man of high moral character, and I think he proved that over his 10 years here.
Thank you. Well said. Dr. Promater?
I'm going to need more than three minutes, since I was brought up in that written-in email.
You get three minutes per matter, so if it's two separate matters...
Okay. I don't have much, but I don't know who that was that sent it in. I didn't hear the name. Who, what was her name?
Let me get it again. Jenny Lynn McVan.
Jenny Lynn McVan. She said that I cost the borough $40,000 in right-to-no requests. Well, I didn't cost the borough that. You are not transparent. If I didn't do right-to-no requests, nobody would have any information about the Police Transition Committee, about numerous things. In fact, you give out packets to each other, and then you take a vote, and you say it's in your packet, and nobody even knows what you're talking about. So the right-to-no request, the money comes in when I have to appeal them, because, again, you withhold documents, and then you have to get lawyers involved, and if you didn't withhold documents, it wouldn't cost as much, because you end up having to have to give them to me, because I win the appeals. That's the first thing. A related issue, and again, this was, I was going to say this anyway. You had the Police Transition, or whatever you're calling it now, meeting tonight, and there were wonderful presentations, and you had asked the members if, that they'll review it, and people on the committee will get back, but why can't the public review that? I mean, that was a lot of information. That should be posted. So I'm going to do a right-to-no request, like I've been doing every week, and then I have to get them, and then I have to publish them in the emails that that woman found upsetting. So I am doing this as a service to Yardley Borough, and...
Dr. Promater, if I may, we can post the documents that were used tonight on the borough website. That's not an issue.
Great.
We can't, we can't give you open access to our emails or text messages. That's not possible.
Okay. I appreciate that. I think it's great that you post, especially the last PowerPoint looked excellent. Okay, now for my original comment. In an October 9th Patch article, you, Caroline Thompson, stated that political violence doesn't start with murder. It starts in online chat rooms, and yes, even in council chambers, when disagreement turns into dehumanization. Then you alleged that you have personally received threatening emails and endured misogyny-charged name-calling since taking office. Now, I just want to say, if you feel threatened or uncomfortable in any way during my public comments, please let me know. I don't want you to feel unsafe. In the Bucks County Herald, October 18th article, you said that when you joined council, there was only one other woman, and she was called names, there was only, which have continued into this campaign. You also said that you are running for mayor, because every time a woman steps up to lead, it gets a little easier for the next one. Unfortunately, you're not familiar with the history of Yardley Borough Council. There have been women on this council for decades, some who have served as president. You're not paving the way for women. In fact, just the opposite. You're making it harder for women. I submitted a right-to-no request to get copies of these alleged threatening emails and records supporting your allegations of misogyny-charged name-calling. Yardley Borough did not provide anything. There was no records of any of these allegations. You have a long history of claiming you're being personally attacked, when any council member, board member, or resident disagrees with you. You even wrote a 17-page hate-filled email accusing your colleagues on council of personally attacking you when they disagreed with your policies. Playing the woman victim card is not an effective leadership strategy, not to mention false allegations make it difficult for a real victim to be taken seriously. Again, I just want to make sure you're not feeling threatened by my comments. I don't want to trigger you. Let me know if you need time to collect yourself. Okay, I'll go on. Can you really claim you are a victim when you've been bullying committee members, council members, and censoring residents' free speech? Can you honestly claim to be a victim when you're responsible for every officer in the Yardley Borough Police Department, including the officers just sworn in and promoted, having to worry whether they will have a job or not? Our officers should be allowed to have peace regarding their job security. Yardley Borough does not need a mayor, you, whose bad decisions caused officers to leave, and they left. That's why we had so many people sworn in tonight, and whose management style is to discredit anyone who criticizes you, which was attached to the last email, 52 text messages proving that, in case you're going to say it's not true. Yardley Borough does not need a woman mayor who cries misogyny just to get elected. That's a disgrace to women everywhere who fought for years to achieve equality. I hope you're not too traumatized by my comments to continue presiding over council tonight.
Thank you. I would just like to correct something that you said, that the borough responded to your right-to-no request, saying that no records were found. That is emphatically false. Our attorney's response that was provided to our right-to-no officer is, "Your request is denied due to lack of specificity, and because your request does not seek records related to any transaction or activity of the borough. To be sufficiently specific, a request should identify a distinct subject matter, scope, and timeframe. Your request identifies a subject matter related to election campaign media coverage rather than any transaction activity or government function of the borough. Your request is also extremely broad in scope and timeframe. For these reasons, the borough is unable to complete a record search or identify responsive records for this request. To this, to the extent that your request seeks information about events occurring in council chambers, documentation pertaining to all council meetings is available to the public via the borough website, if the link is given, and on the borough's YouTube channel, the link is given. Request number two: Your request is denied due to lack of specificity, and because your request does not seek records related to any transaction or activity of the borough. To be sufficiently specific, a request should identify a distinct subject matter, scope, and timeframe. Your request identifies a subject matter related to election campaign media coverage rather than any transaction activity or government function of the borough. Your request is also extremely broad in scope and timeframe. For these reasons, the borough is unable to complete a record search or identify responsive records for this request. Nowhere in this response does it state that no records exist."
If you have been threatened in email, you need to prove it.
How, how, do you?
I will put another right-to-no request in.
Do you, Dr. Promater?
I couldn't be any more specific. You're claiming that you've been threatened, that you're being dehumanized, that you're misogyny-charged name-calling. What, what is it? Tell me. What, what has...
Dr. Promater, I do not need to prove anything to you.
Well, I have a family.
I have a family who loves me. I go home to them. I have, I am fulfilled in life, and nothing you have ever said to me has made me feel like I am less than who I am. I am very confident in who I am as a person and what I have done for this borough.
I'm sorry I triggered you, but this is, you're running for mayor. You're making serious allegations that people in this room, including your fellow council members, have dehumanized you. You can't just say that and then pretend you didn't say that.
That's not what I said. Thank you, Dr. Promater. Any other public comments this evening?
May I just follow up on one, just one part of what was brought up regarding the right-to-no's, and it's just that I think we have spoken about ways to get some of these documents out, and I think the limitation is just that, on the technical side, the borough is limited in its abilities. However, I've proposed, and I'll remind Paula, if we can figure out a way to take, like we have a OneDrive folder in the police committee, in the same way, we can easily put folders that are part of committees, and just general for council, that contain information that the public could then just go through and pull documents out. I do think that that would be a service to the community, to be able to see what we're doing. We've spoken about it. I just think we have to get the technical side working and come up with a process of how we get those out, and how we decide what becomes public, because I think it's in the public interest to get the documents out. I don't think that there's necessarily a desire to not get them out. I think it's just there's no mechanism and process to do it. And so I would support doing that, and maybe that would help you having to make less requests, and therefore save everyone a lot of time and money having to deal with that.
Yeah, and for the record, that item was with the management of our borough website as a special project, and the issue becomes read-write authority and download rights and things like that, which is not built into our current website plan. So it's something that we would likely need to hire out to a new entity to work on that.
Well, it could be done, yeah, but it could be done like...
We didn't have to spend so much on right-to-no's. Maybe we could do something.
Well, this is where I'm going to push back a bit, because I think that this is where, yes, in an ideal world, it's part of the website, but you know what? You could have a link to a website, a public folder. I could do that right now during this meeting. I could do it in Google Drive. I could do it in Dropbox. You could do it in Microsoft, and that public folder can have subfolders. And it may not be beautiful, because it's just folders, and you have to navigate through, but, you know, we could post things in there, and that works, you know? At least it's there, and you could give people access. So I don't think, I understand we're limited. We don't have an internal web developer. We have limited funding, but there are things that we can do with tools that we already have, like OneDrive, that maybe we could start doing it, and, you know, it could start with just a few documents, but you probably could name like 10 documents pretty quickly that would be great to put out there, but you have no, you have no place to put them, you know?
So we'll put the...
I'm just saying, what's...
What the documents shared so far with the Police Transition Committee that were posted tonight, we can post those on the website. It becomes, when we get to a larger scope, and our committee's going to handle things equally, it becomes, it needs to be a larger conversation outside of this.
Yeah, yeah, correct. Yeah, it has to be a process, because there has to be some determination of what, sometimes you have to protect certain information, because it deals with people from the public, or whatever sensitive matter, so there has to be some process to say this is okay to go out there, but yeah, let's do it.
Correct. We've also been advised by legal counsel that anything that has not been voted on should not be released to the public, because it's draft material, and it's going to be considered final, even though it's not. So what's our, what's our watermarking? There's just, there's a lot to it. So I think we can start small with the police com- So I think we can start small with the police committee for things that have already been shared on the screen, and you can try to zoom in at home, but you can't. That makes sense to me, and we'll go from there. I saw councilperson Applebaum, I think you had a comment.
Yeah. I wasn't really prepared to do this, but after hearing the letter, which I've read, and it made me reflect on the optics of the situation that Ms. Perlmutter and Mr. Holfelder's, who were mentioned in the letter. And so I wrote some very quickly now, and I hope you'll allow me to give my opinion, if that's okay?
Sure.
I'll direct this to, are you there? Oh, hi. And Raymond. You know, as volunteers, we are committed to serving the residents of this town, and with integrity and respect. We don't get paid, and we take on a lot of responsibility. And, you know, sometimes emotions run high. As I said earlier, sometimes, though we're family, we argue and things happen, you know? We say things in a moment of heated debate. But what I'm seeing here tonight, what I've seen over and over and over again, is really unnecessary. We need to come together as a community. We need to support those people who are trying to do their very best to make this a great The personal attacks and the accusations, they don't contribute to good dialogue, in my opinion, and just upsets people. I don't know the woman who wrote that letter, but obviously she was upset, and I don't think it was necessary. Now, regarding Mr. Holfelder's signage, which was also, as House, which was also mentioned, I have, unbeknownst to others, I've been trying to do some backdoor diplomacy, which failed to work. I've spoken to Mr. Holfelder about the signage and was contacted by Mr. Bark, who's running also for mayor, and he was disgusted by having his name associated with signage that is shaming this person who is a respected community member, a professional, hard-working professional, someone who is a leader in her field, and respected community member, and a devoted mother. And to use those pictures in such a shameful and disparaging, frankly disgusting, way makes me ill. And I asked for the signs to be removed. We can't make you remove signs, but you know what? It's the human thing to do. This is a town of 2,500 people, and if we can't try to come together and work together and stop shaming people and try to be part of the solution instead of part of the problem, then there's a problem, there's a big problem here. And this behavior is not just disappointing, it's harmful, and, as I was saying about Tom Cattler earlier, it undermines the values of all these people who have put, who've come before us, who have worked hard to make this a great place to live. And Caroline, I want to thank you for being part of that and being part of this team on council, and, you know, again, we don't always agree, but that's okay. We're family. It happens. But I would never do shame you or disparage you in the way that has happened over and over again. Please, stop it. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, moving on to?
I feel I have to address that.
Go ahead.
You don't seem to understand what free speech is.
Oh, I understand. You were speaking now.
Caroline Thompson and Paula Johnson, the manager and council president, were sued in federal court. They were found in violation of free speech, and you're up here.
That doesn't give you the right to shame them.
No.
You shamed them.
Please, let us not fight amongst each other. No, 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 but, please.
That is your opinion. This is an election. You're all Democrats.
We're a council. This is not an election at this moment.
You're making political comments tonight, and free speech. You need to learn what it is. You need to stop telling people what they can say, what they can post, what they can put on their lawn.
I said he had the right.
And in terms of shaming, that's your perception of it.
Free speech doesn't mean you go to a movie and yell "fire," and that's exactly what you're doing. Thank you.
All right. Thank you for your comments. Thank you, Councilperson Applebaum. Thank you, Dr. Perlmutter, for your comments as well. We are closing public comment this evening unless there are any other comments. We will now consider the consent agenda dated October 21st, 2025. It includes approval of the minutes dated October 7th, 2025, consideration of FEMA-funded 112 to 114 Morgan Avenue elevation payment certificate number seven. Final event permit Halloween parade, October 25th, 11:00 a.m., begins at Borough Hall. Event permit for Canal Halloween, October 26th through November 1st. Canal at North Edgewater Ave. Event permit Veterans Day procession, November 11th, 10:15 a.m., begins at the Legion. Would any member of council wish to remove an item from the consent agenda? Hearing none, I would entertain a motion to approve items A through A.
Is there a move?
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion was made by councilperson Share, seconded by councilperson Finer. Discussion from council. Discussion from the public. Hearing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries unanimously. You have before you the finance report dated October 21st, 2025. Are there any questions, comments, concerns? Otherwise, it will be accepted by consensus. We already handled all the public safety items, so we'll move on to our main, second main event of the evening, general government budget presentation.
Which is, this is the fun stuff. So today, we are going to be doing the 2026 budget presentation. It's not going to be a ton of detail, since we talked so much at the last meeting, and a lot of the stuff that was decided upon was put into the budget, so we're going to move forward like this. So today, we are presenting the 2026 preliminary budget for adoption. As we have been doing in the past several years, the 2026 budget follows the same format by individual funds. There are 16 in all. The budget adheres to the guidelines of the Pennsylvania Chart of Account for Local Governments published by the DCED. Our 2025 accomplishments. We completed, almost completed, our 10-house elevation.
You have the last page up there. You've got to go to the first page. There we go.
There you go. Our CRS rating has been increased to a number seven. This gives our NFIP policyholders now a 15% reduction in flood insurance. Phase three sidewalks have begun, linking North Main Street to Dolington. Short-term lodging ordinance was approved and enacted. We improved communication with borough residents. So 2026, we will, next slide. Getting into 2026, to maintain the expected services and keep up with our assets, we are recommending a tax increase of 1.9 mils in a general fund. We are also recommending a 1.39 mil increase in the capital reserve fund. As we discussed at the last meeting, this will be an overall increase of 3.29 mils. Next slide, please. This slide explains about the $34,465 that will go into the general fund from the 1.9 mil increase. So this is showing where it's going, pretty much in general fund. General fund keeps our day-to-day operations going. It pays our police officers. The admin staff takes care of a lot of day-to-day operations, which is what the general fund is. The 1.9 mil increase going into capital reserve is for a match for the PA Small Water Grant for the parking lot and University Drive project that we have applied for, a grant for. This equates to about $37,566. We also have a .3 mil, or just about $1,000 additional, going into our capital reserve so we can continue to build this account, and capital reserves helps us apply for grants, do matches, and stuff like that. Next slide, please. What this means to our residential owners. In 2025, the borough tax portion bill was about $867.43, and this was just an estimate. With the proposed tax increase, residents would anticipate the borough portion of the tax bill to be approximately $956.42. This would be an approximate increase of $89 for the year of 2026. It's about a 10.25 increase percent increase from last year. The next slide shows how a millage is calculated. We go over this a lot. We take the county assessment, and you have to divide it, and this gives us our value. We have to take into account for people that pay their bills ahead of time so they get a discount. There is a 1% uncollectible, so this just explains how a mil is calculated, really. So each mil is approximately $34,000. Tax dispersments among the funds. Here's a graph that shows how the taxes are dispersed amongst all our various funds. Our general purposes, excuse me, will receive approximately $969,000. Fire protection, just about $30,000. Street improvement, about $38,000. Street lighting, $29,000. Ambulance and rescue squad is close to $20,000. Recreation is about $16,000, and capital reserve is about $116,000. Am I right? No, that's not right. No. Is it?
The increase.
The increase?
The tax increase.
Okay. All right, perfect. So that's where our money goes. Everything has to be dispersed throughout all these funds to pay for, like we said, the day-to-day services, to keep our borough running like we want, and our services going to where they're going, and keep everybody somewhat happy. So that's our proposed preliminary budget. If anybody has any questions?
I would just like to remind folks that we did a more detailed presentation at our last meeting. We won't go into it again. It was our last meeting, right? Yes. Please go back and watch it. Don did a really good job going line by line, and we had robust discussion amongst council of what the tax increase covers and why it's necessary this year. Making our police officers pay more competitive with other municipalities is just one piece of a lot of different things that we have to do, like replace our roof and start growing our savings account. So please go back and watch that if you haven't already.
Could you put slide number four back up, please? Slide four, the fourth one in the, oh, I'm sorry. One more. There, stop.
Oh, sorry. There's a delay.
Oh, sorry.
So, you want?
The chart.
That one. Because this is, for my fellow council members, this is the chart we worked at last time, and we had, you gave us some guidance on how to apply it. And I just wanted to make a comment. While it shows, at the top, you have the $65,525, which is within 20 bucks of what we said two weeks ago. So that's the 1.9 mils that basically covers the stuff we got to do to keep the lights on and to, and takes care of the CBA. Now, when you get down into the drainage grant match, that 15% match, which is 37,607, we're showing that as 1.09 mils, just as a math equation, but in reality, that's going to go into capital reserves as well as the additional $10,003.40 that we have down at the bottom. So Ori, together, that gets you $47,000 something. I know you wanted 50, but it gets you close to, you were basically putting 47 something into the capital reserve, and it's not a one-time thing, you realize, because we changed the mill rate. So all else being equal, that will happen again the next year, so that, I think that achieves your request to start moving that up.
Yeah.
So that's, I just want to make sure you realize that. It's not like we took your 50 and put it down to 10.
10 to 10. I really appreciate you doing that and your hard work on getting this so clear, and I appreciate the idea of building our capital reserves a little bit more, understanding what it's used for, and I think it's important for the public to know that, unlike the general fund, council has to make a decision to spend money from capital reserves. And so that makes it, kind of, there's more of a lock on it than just kind of putting your money there. And I really believe that people understand our capital reserves, while they're not nothing, they're pretty small, and the kinds of projects we come across, like the drainage match, if we even get the grant, you know, they're big, and we have to make those decisions as they become available. It doesn't always fit within where the year is. So the right place for those types of things to go is capital reserve. And then we have emergencies that happen, like, you know, mold or roofs, or you could say, you could say those are emergencies. It's been a long time, but, you know, things like that happen. Who knows what could happen? So we need to have the reserves, and I think it's the right thing to do, and if we don't, it's going to be a nice problem to have, that we have too many reserves and we're looking for a project to do. We're far away from that day, but if that ever happens, I don't think that's a problem. But thank you for clarifying that.
Yeah, and also, we'd just like to direct eyes to what's being deferred. So we're not saying yes to everything. This is a measured, measured increase, although it's more than we would like to do in one year. There are several things on the deferred list that, including stormwater management work, that really needs, should be done ASAP, but we are, we are balancing, balancing costs in the next year, I would say.
I'll just give one example. Like, to the Dolington sidewalk additional engineering, so that's actually a grant we were awarded with 100%, like, grant, no match, but that's for the design work to do that construction. So it's not like we have $143,000 sitting around. So we're going to try to get a design grant to pay for that. That design grant might end up having a small match, like 10 or 15%. Well, that becomes doable if our reserves are enough to be able to pay for it. Right now, it's just sitting in deferred, because we're not going to have $143,000 of that additional funding. So that's an example of how, a concrete example of what we could do with that.
And I'll remind you of our direction that we set relative to the roof and to the mold, that we're going to do that. Some of us won't be on council next year, but you'll remember that, and if we don't, you know, if we don't get OSA money to do it, then we'll do the loan thing early next year, I guess, or whenever we can.
Any other questions for Don or Paula on this? Before we ask the, if there's questions from the public?
Fourth time I've done it, I never had questions from the public. I do want to make one other note. I think it'll be coming up later, though. This will be advertised, and it'll be a public inspection period, November 10th to 21, where people can come in and look at the details behind that, and I'll make myself available to sit through anyone who wants to go through the line item review to understand more about the numbers, including fellow councilpeople.
Yeah, I would love it.
Because we don't officially vote till December for the final stand.
I would love if we could all sit down with Don, even if you feel like you understand it. It's really good for us all to be advocates of the budget out in the public. If you're asked questions, any, any one of us should be able to answer questions about what we're voting on, and that meeting with Don helps us do that.
Okay.
All right, so then I would consider a motion to adopt the 2026 preliminary budget, as just discussed.
So moved.
Second.
Second. Motion was made by councilperson Share, seconded by councilperson Carlson. Any further discussion from council? Any discussion from the public? Hearing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries unanimously. Do I hear a motion to advertise public inspection of the town? Do I hear a motion to advertise public inspection of the 2026 preliminary budget from November 10th through 21st? Is there a second?
Second.
Motion was made by Councilperson Applebaum, seconded by Councilperson Share. Just calling out that it doesn't start until November 10th, so if you come tomorrow...
I won't be here.
Then we'll be here. Any discussion from council on that public inspection? From the public? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries unanimously. And finally, do I hear a motion to advertise the 2026 tax levy ordinance increase of 3.29 mils? Motion was made by Councilperson Carlson, seconded by Councilperson Share. Discussion on the proposed increase from council? From the public? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Budget Committee. Appreciate your hard work. All right. Public Works, we have a presentation or just a review of the selection of the final location of our chimney swift, which is spelled correctly this time, tower at Fitzgerald Field. And we have some guests from the EAC here. Welcome.
Would you just, could you give a brief about the sit-in? Done or whatever?
Sure. Hi. Let me make sure this is on, yeah. Julie Pessini, Yardley Borough, representing the EAC, the Yardley EAC Environmental Advisory Commission this evening. So David has asked me to kind of just do a quick review of a short event that we ended up having at Lake Afton last Saturday, it would have been. We had something called a Big Sit, which is a national birding event that takes place every year on World Migratory Bird Day, which was October, was it 12th or 11th? I'm getting my dates 11th, sorry, this year. And so we were at Lake Afton. We were, it was a co-event with Friends of Lake Afton and the Yardley EAC and the Bird Town Organization, where we were out there from 8:00 AM till about noon because of the weather, unfortunately, counting as many bird species as we could that morning. And so we had about, I think we ended up with about 28 different species throughout that portion of the day, and all of that information was submitted to a national database. Again, it will all be used for research purposes as well. So in addition to that, I am here this evening to hopefully discuss with council what would be the location selection for our chimney swift tower. So I think this particular document is actually the plans that I had supplied at one point. There is a location selection document that I sent that is more, a more traditional PowerPoint presentation. If we don't have it, I have it on my laptop.
I can, I mean, we could email it. Can you take the email there?
It doesn't happen.
You don't have it?
I thought that's... Did I go back there?
I can give you, I can give you a...
It's like a presentation.
I'll give you a USB drive, and you can get it.
Okay.
You can just put it on.
I sent it as a PDF.
It's in the, it's in the agenda.
Yeah, it's in our packet. Oops. That's okay. It's no worries. It's in the packet.
He's old. Sorry. Thank you. Okay.
I can give him the packet. Wait a minute, because it's in our packet, right? This one? Yeah. Julie, just leave it down.
Okay. I'll put it on there anyway, so you have it. All right. There you go.
I think he's trying to...
The underscore locations.
Oh, okay. Ori, you should probably try to add, but I'm not sure if you do it, will the public see it?
Yeah, no, that's why, that's why she gave it to him, right?
Okay.
Counselor agenda?
Counselor agenda?
Yeah.
Do you want just the PDF?
Page 57.
It does look a lot nicer.
Yes.
Thank you so much. Okay, so, as you guys are familiar, we are proposing, as EAC and Yardley Bird Town, to put up a chimney swift tower in Fitzgerald Field. I believe council approved this. We are just now in the motions of trying to determine the best location for the, for it, for the structure. You can go to the next slide. This is just a review of the structure itself. It's a 14-foot tower that sits on a 4-foot by 3-foot concrete base, and we're proposing that it be in a open space in Fitzgerald Field, so unobstructed from trees and other shrubbery and power lines, if possible. Next slide. So this is basically what I had in my first presentation when I presented the project initially. I have three locations that I have mapped out that I'm going to review in this particular deck. One of them is in the location in this picture, another is on the opposite side, and then there are two other kind of like adjacent locations that are further down in the field closer to River Road. You can go to the next slide. Just to discuss the first location, this was the initial proposed location for the tower, which was between the one sycamore tree that was planted closest to Bell Avenue, and I believe that there's a second one that's further down from it. This is closer to the fence that is closest to the funeral home there in the field. This was where I had the more detailed renderings. Unfortunately, given some time, we weren't able to produce those for the other two at this moment, but if needed, I can absolutely do that. But this is the kind of general look of what the structure would kind of, how it would potentially appear in that location. This, again, is, we're positioning things closer to Bell Avenue in this option and then the third, for the purpose of there being visibility of the educational sign that comes with this. So there is a 24-inch by 36-inch educational sign, interpretive sign, that will be about 30 feet away from the tower as well. And so the purpose of that is obviously so that the public understands the importance of what we're doing with this tower, why it's here, and what, obviously, chimney swifts are. That PA Fish and Game Commission, really, that's a big part of how they got this grant was with the idea that there would be an educational component for the public with it. So we want to make sure that that's available and accessible for people. You can go to the next slide. This is my option two, which is further down in Fitzgerald Field, and when I say down, I mean closer to the river, basically. So out of what I would consider a public, kind of easier public access area, it's just further away from Bell Avenue, which was, in my mind, I guess, is the entry point to Fitzgerald Field versus River Road due to traffic. There's another sycamore tree that's down near 2A that we could kind of put it in front of, and then the same with 2B, there's other, again, another sycamore tree there as well. So both of these kind of locations are in between what is like the Yardley Borough sign and the duck sculpture and kind of like the tree line that starts to form as you go towards the center of the field.
Excuse me. That could be reached through Fitzgerald Parking Lot?
Are you referring to the funeral?
Rather than coming in from River Road.
Sorry. I don't think I understand the question.
You were saying that it, they're closer to River Road, so it would be hard for people, not, maybe not so safe.
Yeah.
But is that the parking lot of the funeral home to the left of the 2A? Maybe somebody could walk from there that would be safe.
Absolutely. Yeah. I just don't know if...
But visibility would be poor.
It's just, yeah, it would be, obviously, they'd be, it's a little further distance from any kind of, what we're, people are typically going to be walking in that area, which would be Bell Avenue in my mind. Honestly, anything away from the trees or the power lines will be okay for the birds. The main thing for them is just that entry point at the top of it and having clear access to that, so.
Okay.
Okay, we can go to now what is my, this is the new option. This is option three. Apologies for the inconsistency in the renderings. Doing my best. So this is kind of closer to what is the property line on Bell and out a little ways from the trees and the shrubs that are kind of in the corner that this forms. And it actually, it may be helpful, too, to go forward a slide or backwards, and I can kind of point out where this, I think, is. Because of there being trees and shrubs in this location, we're, I'm proposing that the tower be a little bit further out into the actual field itself versus kind of tucked in that corner to avoid obstruction. The EAC discussed this at our last meeting. We felt that this was another option that would be good to provide because there is currently some discussion that is being had that we are not yet public with, but we're considering potentially putting a garden space there at some point if that goes through.
That EAC's recommendation to put a garden there?
That would be correct, yes. That would be the EAC's recommendation at that point.
For the birds?
We would probably structure the garden with the intention that there would be pollinator options there, so in direct, kind of indirect, like, benefit to what would be birds, yeah.
May I just add one thing to that?
Right.
Yep. Yes.
Because I was at the bean. Not for the sake of creating a garden, but creating an educational or outdoor classroom. So the idea is not, hey, let's just put another garden in, but is that, would that be fair?
Yeah, we, again, it's been just kind of in closed discussions at this point, like, we haven't, like, decided that we were going to move forward with it yet, but this option allows for that in a, in a better location than the other two. So if we're thinking ahead, like, this potentially, I think, positions the tower in a place where, like, it could be built around it. There are things, gardening, gardening could be done around it, is kind of a better way to put it. Whatever that looks like, I don't, we don't have a plan for that yet, but...
This is the EAC's recommended of the three options?
It's, I think if I had to pick, it would be this, or this one or the first one, yeah. The first one was my first inclination because it was very free of any kind of obstruction, and so that made the most sense. And it was also not near a property. This one is much closer to a home.
Is that, has that homeowner been consulted with?
Yes. I did go door to door, and I, I did talk with the individual that owns the property. Uh, no, they're not.
Oh, okay.
So that's why I'm not super jazzed about this option, but out of the three, it is better than, I would think, the second one.
But if it's near people's homes, wouldn't there be a lot of extra noise? Does that...
Oh, no noise, not at all. No. Uh-uh. There'll be no noise. No.
Can you go back?
No, no. She means...
Oh, sorry. I'm so sorry.
Why are people...
So these, the birds nest in people's chimneys already, so they're usually, I would say, closer to people's homes than actually, if they're using the tower, in that regard. So I think that's always a concern, of course, that there could be disturbance, but I think in this case, if we're worrying about a disturbance, it would be more direct, like somebody intentionally trying to disturb them in the structure.
Do you know what the objection was? Is it the look of it, or is it...
It is definitely, yeah, I believe the words eyesore were used, so, yeah.
I personally would try to avoid going somewhere that nobody wanted it.
That was a concern.
Are we, is our goal still to select a location tonight?
Yes.
I would, I think, if we can.
So I think council is still very much in support of where, that your, EAC's favorite spot, and we move forward, and if we hit any roadblocks, we can always come back to the drawing board, but if the first location is still EAC's recommendation, I think we proceed, and if the way be clear, the way be clear.
I'll just add this. I think it's, it's good that you consulted the homeowners. We don't want to do something that, for the public good, that then, you know, upsets somebody. And I can understand that, you know, it's not a natural-looking thing, although some people might want the birds. If it was the garden, I might think differently, because it's like, you know, how bad is it to have some flowers around? But I can understand something like that, you know? In other words, sometimes homeowners, you have to kind of balance what's fair and reasonable and what's kind of like, no, I don't want anything...
Yeah.
A garden won't make it less of an eyesore for them.
No, no. What I'm saying is, like, I'm just trying to kind of public, like, sort of out loud talk about how we take concerns of homeowners into account of the whole picture, and in this case, it does make sense. And if you wanted to put a garden there, I think you could put a garden there without the chimney swift.
That is also what I'm considering, yeah, thinking as well.
Ori, or council, let me be clear that, and maybe you were going to say this. You surveyed homeowners in the direct vicinity. There was one person that was adverse, but that's one person who hasn't, unless I'm mistaken, has that a person come to Borough Hall to complain about it? Manager Johnson?
Not as yet, but...
No, and that's possible, right? But they're well aware. The only thing I wanted to mention, point of information, I was there today. The tree that overhangs, I realize that could be easily pruned and cut back more and would give a nicer, a little bit back for...
In this location?
Yes.
Okay.
Which is, I don't, I'm sorry, I'm not here, I don't want to argue the point, but I think that's closer to the shed than the house itself. That picture is misleading because it almost looks like it's, like, next to the house. It's not.
Yes. So actually, can you go to the next slide for me? I did my best to try and communicate that.
See, that's a more, a better representation, and I propose that it could go back just a little bit more with the trimming or pruning of the tree, which I looked at today.
Yeah. So, yes, to David's point, this is not necessarily next to the hedge line that is there, that is that property owner's. It is, it's set back further, closer to those, that tree line that forms that corner there in the field.
Further, there was a beer festival this weekend. I attended. We want to make sure and be cognizant of those people that have events, and we want to make sure that there's no obstructions, and I, just my personal opinion, I like to, but that's not...
Sure.
You got me confused. Are you got your number three or number one?
I could do either. I think number one was my initial choice.
What's the EAC committee's choice?
Um...
When you say one, which one is one?
Number one, option one. So can you go back to slide four for me? It's the one that has a lot of the white on it, and it's like the field, this location here. So this is actually, if, I think if you were to look at it in perspective, this is basically directly across from the third option. It's just on the opposite side of the field. It was, it's more exposed, which is, in theory, based on research, more ideal for them if they are going to take to this tower and nest in it.
So given David's point, I think what makes sense is if this is the preferred option, we move forward, and now that we have an exact location, we repole the neighborhood, and we also speak with event makers who use this space and get their input as well, and ensure that this is agreeable for all. Like, we should go out and put something there, so instead of using renderings, like, come out to the spot and walk it with us and look at it. And, yeah, I think we should go with what the EAC thinks is best if the people who use the space and the people who live next to the space are okay with it.
Okay.
My last question relative would be, what is the distance from the plaque to the structure?
I was advised...
It looks like really far away on the...
Yeah.
Number three.
I'm not doing so good with this. I'm trying. I was advised that it'd be 30 feet. That was, that was what PA Fish and Game gave me when I asked them that question.
30 feet to plaque away from the...
That is correct. Now...
Probably to help the birds...
That being said...
...comfortable there.
Like, if that's an issue, I can absolutely go back.
Peeking in, you know?
Yeah. If that's an issue, I can absolutely go back and discuss that with him. I am going to go down to Morrisville on Monday and see their tower. They have theirs up in Patriots Park, so I'm going to talk with Annie, that is the PA Bird Town lead in Morrisville, to discuss that with her.
That says that's 37 from there.
That's to the road, though, right?
Right?
Yeah, that's what I was thinking. It looks like five feet.
From there to there, just like the size of that...
So at the time of this rendering, we did not have that information from PA Fish and Game. So, yeah. Yep, yep. That is, that was something I got after I came to you guys the first time, so I haven't revised it.
It might even make sense to just do it at the curb line. Some people...
People walking by can read it.
Good point.
That would, I think, support our, you know, goal with it, which is, again, is education for the public, as long as that is something that everybody's okay with.
Because then it's two separate objects in the middle of the field.
Less intrusive for Beer Fest in the future.
Sure.
Nobody will knock it over with a truck.
Yeah.
Beer Fest only lasts a day.
No, I know.
Right, but there's other events that may want, you know, do things there and...
Yeah.
They're all only a day long.
So Ms. Julie, did you tell the neighbors about this location? Did you talk to them already about it?
I discussed that we could put it further away in the field.
Was anybody upset about that?
I think in general, at that point in the conversation, things were not super, unfortunately, positive about it. So there was still, I think, some objection to it, no matter what. I think it was just...
It's anybody's home though, right?
No, this is closer to the funeral home now.
Yes, but it's still in view of the person who owns the home.
That's correct, yeah. Like, if somebody looks out their window, they could see it.
Besides the funeral home, are there homes that you live in?
I mean, I don't, I think there's a difference between somebody has it right next to their home, like in their yard, or they can see it when they look out the window. I mean, there's a level...
Different view.
Yeah, we have to kind of keep it reasonable.
I propose we pull emails for the people who live there, and we send them your, a link to your presentation that you did. Because I think, I know I've spoken to lots of folks at their door who don't want me to be on their doorstep and want me to go away, and it's very like, you don't get as much time as you want. So please, watch this, and then let's have a conversation after they have all of the information. And if we still have objections, we'll go from there. Objections do not mean we can't proceed, but obviously, this council would like for folks to be excited about it. And after your presentation, we all just felt immense pride at what you all are doing, and I hope that the homeowners would too, so...
October 21st now, you had a, not a drop-dead date, but you had a date in mind because of a delivery. Is that correct?
We can be flexible. I just want to say that, like, that's absolutely what I want as well. I would love this to be like either more education or somewhat unanimous, if we can get somewhat unanimous approval on it. I don't want people to feel like we've done something without asking them, especially in this case. So if you can get me emails and we want to send this to them, that'd be, I would love that. That would be great.
With Manager Johnson?
Okay. Yeah, that would be fantastic.
Maybe stick it like a, I don't know, like one of those little like markers or something in it where it's going to be. That might be easier to describe it if, like...
Please walk out your door and look where the marker is.
Okay, okay. That sounds good.
Have a stick or something.
Okay, yeah, that would be...
Tomato steak kind of thing.
Whatever I can get. Like I said, not familiar with this process, kind of looking for some guidance on it. So that is super helpful.
Thank you. Is there a distance in this case of what persons we have to notify? Or is this just an informal survey?
It's informal. You're just trying to accommodate the residents and for our property, putting something up. And I think this is much less intrusive than over there. That neighbor definitely, I know Nick.
If that neighbor definitely has some issues with it over here, it's, yeah, it's less. It's way on this side.
Yeah, so just for the public, we are fully within our right to erect this without any approval from anyone or notifying anyone. But it is the right process that we are putting something new in an open space that folks have enjoyed, that we try to work collaboratively with.
This is an underused piece of property that the Borough owns. And I guess my goal, not just as liaison for EAC, but as the chair for community economic development, is to keep finding ways to develop destinations for people to come and visit. And I know for sure that bird people and nature lovers and families...
Girl Scouts, Boy Scouts?
Girl Scouts, Boy Scouts, potentially, I'm not suggesting we do this, but what if there was a picnic bench or a park bench? How much more use we would get out of this space and other events? That's the last comment I'll make.
The other advantage of you getting email address and getting your nice pitch to those, they can then be advocates for. Because when they see that thing going, you go, what the heck's that? Is it a Verizon tower going up or something, you know?
No, it's a new...
So they'll be advocates for, because they'll know what it is.
I, yeah, I would like to go about it that way. I just don't think I was entirely sure how to do that. So I appreciate the guidance.
Let's maybe hear a motion to approve option on funeral home side pending further communication with the homeowners. I heard a motion from Councilperson Scher, seconded by Councilperson Finer. Any further discussion from council?
Just thank you for your pushing ahead with this and working with the EAC as well, just to create this. It takes a lot to get something seemingly simple in, and you're discovering that. But it's, I appreciate your persistence with it. I'm excited for future ideas like the pollinator gardens. It's good for everyone.
I will just say too, and the idea that this is something that people would maybe come and see, I will say that, so I put, we had to fundraise for this project to get the concrete poured. I sent an email out to what was the Bucks County Birders Group on Monday. And by the end of the day, I had raised over $1,347 from people for it. So it was, I was shocked. Yeah, so people are excited. It's not, no small feat. The fellow that is actually going to be delivering it through the PA Fish and Game Commission, Stephen Carcuff, he did a presentation for Bowman's Hill Wildflower Preserve. They're still, they still have 46 towers that are open throughout the state of Pennsylvania that anybody could put up if anybody is interested. So I will just say that, you know, you can reach out to me, the EAC, through David, or our potential email address that we're looking to get, if you're interested in something like that as well. And the last thing I will say is, we are, I believe, planning on, right now, having it delivered on November 17th. It doesn't have to be up necessarily, upright, but the idea is that PA Fish and Game would be delivering the tower on that day and that we would be then responsible for digging the hole and pouring concrete and then putting it up. So, not like it's a deadline, but it's a flexible timeline.
Around here, not, not get stagnant, so that sounds great.
Yeah.
And then, Councilperson Applebaum, can I ask me in economic development to, in addition to Ms. Pessini's work, contacting the homeowners, talk with the event space users?
It's a work, not in progress, but I've been actually speaking to them, yes.
Awesome.
I will be able to update you on that. The guy who's pouring the concrete, is he from Crete or is he, I don't understand that.
I think it's just his business name, if you wanted a real answer.
And any other comments from the public? I think we have to vote still, if I'm not mistaken.
I have something.
Okay. I forgot you were there, sorry.
So I just wanted to, yeah, sorry, turn my video on. I second Dawn's comment that he brought up about the sign being on the curb line.
That was me.
I think that would, was that you? Sorry.
We sound alike.
Second, third, whatever. I think that will make it more accessible to people that are, that are going by. Yeah, I'm in my car. I'm on the turnpike. I think that will make it more accessible to people who are walking by that. And then also, it's one less obstruction in the middle of the field for when we do have events there. So I'm in favor of that. And then I had a question, Julie. So you, in the document that you sent to us, you said that you still need to raise $600?
Not anymore.
You said you have a $1,000 donation, so that's, it's fully funded?
It is funded, yeah, and then some. We have about 200-some dollars over, so that'll go towards, I guess, any kind of remediation of the landscape that will be disturbed potentially by the project, so...
Wonderful. That's, that's great to hear. Great work on this.
Yep, so...
All right, I'll call the question. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries very happily unanimously.
Thank you.
All right, just a quick reminder that the next Tuesday is Election Day, so we will be meeting the following day, Wednesday, November 5th, at 7:30 PM. Same place as always. Please vote, everyone, and I would entertain a motion to adjourn. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion was made and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Meeting adjourned at 9:11 PM.